Time being seven P M. All the council meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands one nation under one law.
Public participation. If you'd like to speak to the council, please fill out a form and hand it to Shannon over here. Please indicate on the form if you wish to speak during the discussion on a specific agenda item. Remember, council members are not allowed to answer, thank you, or answer questions during public participation. And please state your name and address for the record. Pat Adams?
Thank you, counsel. I wanted to share very quickly a situation that I had that could be impacting other citizens in Argyle. And it was with the Argyle water supply. We received a bill for a month of water and it was 12 times what it had been the month before. Obviously got our attention after a lot of research and a lot of pushback by the manager. We found that it was not our issue at all. It was theirs and it was a bad meter. They had to replace everything. It took a month and they were onerous to say the least, or the manager was. And so I just wanted to give a heads up for any other Bartonville residents or frankly, Argyle, that have had big bills and pushed back and got pushed back from the manager. Very uncustomer friendly. I also went to the water board, shared everything, told them my concerns. They are addressing things, but it's, it was very, very concerning. Their website shows nothing. Took me forever to just get a list of their board of directors. And then as you look into it, it's even more concerning. So I just raise it as a red flag for other citizens that if you have an issue, challenge. And don't be put off. And if you need to go to the board, do that. So again, share with your constituents. That's real important. We have a lot of elderly people that can't stand up. Those are the ones I worry about. So that's it. Thank you for your time. Just wanted to be sure you knew.
Thank you, Pat. Are we able to set the time when we need to? Okay. Appointed Representative Leijon reports. Please chief.
Thank you, mayor, council, staff. Included in your packet is the monthly report. We'll start off with the self-initiated officer initiated activity for the month of, and this is for the month of May. Four hundred and thirty-seven total points there. And of those, one hundred and fifty-eight were traffic stops, so that those continue to tick up. Calls for service, which generate reports, one hundred and eleven. That's, that's increased a little. Medical calls, there were six. So you see anything in there that catches your attention, feel free to ask. For the month of April, we had four hundred and eighty-three total calls. Month of May, we had five hundred and fifty-four. So a little bit of an uptick there. Had six crashes, all no injuries. And of those two were hitting runs and one was a DWI arrest, which was on Porter and Broome over in that area. The twelve-month average is also included there. The last should be the last slide. If you can kind of see that the, the twelve-month average has gone up just a little bit from where it was last year on both sides. So any questions?
Those tickets, traffic tickets, how many are for bicycles running stop signs?
Well, we haven't started issuing any of those yet because of the, there's a grace period for that. There's kind of a, kind of a, a, a great, a great, you know, grace period so that we can get people to know that those are there and there for a reason. So we're issuing warrants right now.
So an officer get a warning on Saturday to one of them. It wasn't me, but one of them did get a warning.
Now, the pre-existing stop signs, obviously there will be some citations issued there, but the ones that we've added, they're currently getting warnings at this point.
I know you guys do a great job. I know everybody can't be everywhere at once, but you're out here running around on Saturday or Sunday morning. My wife and I set the stop sign. I watched twenty-three run the stop sign the other day, but it's slowing down.
That can be addressed internally.
Saw two run on the way up here today. But it's, it's just, I just don't see them stopping. And there's so many people in these new subdivisions that use this for their riding trail, especially.
Absolutely. And that's, and that's probably only going to increase, I would imagine.
I think so too.
But we, yeah, we, they get to them when they can and they, they try to.
Yeah, yeah. In, in the future, it makes me interested to see how many of, of, of the tickets on bus service after the grace period when we get to that thing.
Certainly stop by or, or if it's something that you want to discuss, you know, in this setting, we can, we can do that too. So.
The grace period expire. Have we established a timeframe or date?
Roughly a month.
From the time.
From the time they were installed.
Okay.
So same thing we did with the speed limit on McMakin. We did the same thing. So we're now issuing citations for that area. So.
Question, this is not related to the traffic, but to, I notice every month on your report with the animals, a report that it sometimes is fluctuation. I know it's this month you had nine. What does that pertain? Is this, is this people calling you ask? Do they go through American dogs? Or how does that, how do, how do you get involved in that versus American dogs? And do you contact American dogs?
This depends on the nature of the call. If it's a dog bite, we call American dogs. If it's loose animals, we call it loose dogs, domestic dogs, we call them. Now, they won't, they won't deal with big animals. I mean, they might if they're out here, but they're not contractually obligated to do that. But if it's a big animal, then we have to seek other alternatives. But typically it's, it's loose dogs or, or somebody getting bit or something to that effect. Good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks chief.
Town administrator, monthly report, May two thousand and twenty-three, financial animal control code enforcement, engineering municipal court permit in Denton County Emergency Service District. Is it okay if I let Chief Vaughn, would you like to get up and say a few things to update us on the E S D?
Thank you, mayor, council. Yes, I would just like to kind of provide an update. I think the last time we met, we were talking about some of the challenges we were facing financially. And I wanted to just kind of give you just a real quick update on where we are. If you recall, basically there was two financial buckets that we were working on. One was you kind of paying, make sure the firefighters were paid properly in the, in the retirements. And so that was one part. And then there was just our balancing our budget. For making sure the firefighters all get paid back, we are basically doing some restructuring from debt. So our fire station three, which is over off Copper Canyon Road, is actually owned or was owned by the Argyle Fire District. And so the E S D is actually restructuring the debt, going to buy the station from them, which will give the Argyle Fire District funds to sufficiently pay back the firefighters. So that's, that's how we're looking to resolve those issues. And as far as balancing our budget, obviously we started out with a close to one point nine million dollar deficit in our budget. We've been working, Land Tana Cares gave a three hundred thousand dollar donation worth like gave a hundred. And so we'll work with our communities, including the county itself, to work on some of that. But we're also getting a opening and application for a line of credit for a million dollars. And between all those things, we should be fine in being able to balance our budget. That's, that's the goal. Cash flow, we're doing okay. We're just trying to not spend money. We're basically what I call living on soup and beans where you just don't spend the money. So cash flow wise, I think we're going to be okay, but it is going to be one of those things. We just got to be, be careful about what we spend. So, so that's where we are with our budget. I want to kind of let you know also about our petitions. We've got two petitions we've been working on. One is with the annexation of Land Tana, the community. We, within ten days, we've got a tripled amount of signatures we needed. So we've got more than enough signatures to bring Land Tana into the district. And also we're working on a second creation of an overlay EMS district with the intent of being able to have sustainable funding provided for ambulance services. So that's, that we equally, we started petitions then, and within ten days, we had over six hundred signatures. So we've got more than enough signatures. And so we've since then, since today, we followed that with the county and they will be putting that on their docket to set a, a public hearing in the future. So just want to give you an update on that. As far as activities in Bartonville, we made in May, we made two hundred and sixty-five calls, of which about twenty or so were in Bartonville. Our call volume is about two percent more than last year. So we're steadily growing. Not as bad as we had in years past. Years past, we'd gone twenty percent growth. So we are steadily growing. So things are going good. And then when this year, I want to say we had a really great turnout for a kind of what I want to call our, our new signature event. And that was the carry, carry the load event that went through Bartonville. We actually with Marty B's and stopped there for tacos, which was interesting, wearing all your gear hot and sweaty and having a breakfast taco, which was kind of interesting, but it was good. We had a great turnout. We want to thank the police department for providing a traffic protection. I think Chief even actually participated. And so it was a really great turnout and it didn't cost us anything. That's always the best thing, right? So we, we just basically tagged on to the Carry the Load National Group. They're talking about it becoming a national event. So it may be something we do nationally. And it'll be our open house opportunity for us to bring the community to our station, five eleven, and let the community see what we do. And, and of course we get to cook hamburgers and hot dogs too. So it was a great event. We've also had some other great activities this summer. We had the science summer series. We had CoServe come out and they basically had a big trailer. There's electricity for all the kids. We've had three hundred and fifty plus kids come out and they got the electrocute hot dogs. It was kind of cool and they enjoyed that. So what we're looking to do the next year is going to be on snakes because believe it or not, we get a lot of calls for snakes, especially in the Copper Canyon area. And so we think it'll be educational for the kids and then we're also doing one on severe weather. So a lot of things going on in the community. I think that's important, being out in the community. I think we, we like to, we like to see all the kids participate in that. And of course, we got Fourth of July coming. And so I know in November of last year, Bartonville passed an ordinance, kind of banning prohibiting fireworks. So it'll be interesting to see how that works out this year. We'll be working with the police department on that. But of course we'll come out and investigate where we need to and try to, if we're not too busy, we'll try to come to every call we can. But it is a busy time of year and we just ask the citizens that they just be mindful and, and respect the law and just, you know, take care of your neighbors as well. So with that, I'll take any questions.
I looked at the report, but do you remember what percentage was fire compared to EMS on that?
Yes, it's, it was, I think we actually a little bit more fire this time than usual. Usually about sixty-five, thirty-five. And I think we were sixty-three, thirty-eight, something like that. It was a little bit more fires usually. We did have a couple of fires, more so than usual. They were in Argyle. So we did have a little bit more in comparison, but generally speaking, we're somewhere between sixty-five, thirty-five.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, mayor. We normally don't pass these things out at council anymore, but just finished the financials about forty-five minutes ago. So I'm going to pass these out. They will also be upload loaded to the online agenda. So anybody following at home will be able to see these starting tomorrow. We'll open up, if you're looking up to your revenues pages, we always start with our sales taxes. If you, actually let me get to my page, not that one. We are sixty-seven percent through our budget year through May. Again, these are May numbers, not June. Revenues were healthy again. Sales taxes coming in at almost ninety-nine thousand. That does include the mixed beverages. We'd like to see thirty-three percent or less revenue remaining to be collected. And you see that we only have twenty-five, twenty-six percent almost of sales tax remaining. Property tax, we've actually collected more than we budgeted for the year. Franchise fees. Also, we are over budget already with again, almost four months remaining to be accounted for. Sorry, it's been a long day. Sorry. Development fees as anticipated, we're not going to see very many of that, of fees coming in from that. We will probably see one more check from Deer Hollow as they finish out their project for any of the overtime that was done for the inspections. So that'll balance out. Permit fees are still healthy. We're actually over revenue on that. And municipal court, we're actually already over in municipal court. So again, almost a full year of full staff on police is starting to really show up in the municipal court. Yes, here the negatives are good. You will see one later that's not terrible, but it's not supposed to be on that page. You know, a couple of months ago, I talked about that little dip. We're now tracking again positively. If you look at that next page at our trend analysis on the sales tax, twelve-month rolling average. Again, we're that little, I would, I don't worry a lot about the blips as long as the trend continues and it does look like we're going to continue up. If you'll turn to administration, or excuse me, general fund expenditures, the aggregate. Once again, we are looking at, we'd like to see twenty, thirty-three percent or more remaining available in these categories. Administration, you see where we still have thirty-three percent available. We spent a hundred and fourteen thousand total. Police fifty-one thousand, they're looking healthy as well. Municipal court, that one always tracks right with the budget because they cost the same every month. So that one doesn't fluctuate. And transfers, we've talked about that one. The reason that one is over, the negative I was talking about, that thirty-five thousand nine forty-eight is actually the Land Tana tax grant. So it's still in our accounts. It's just transferred to take care of that. That one usually has an excess, but we always make sure we're conservative with our transfers. So it's there when it's due. So again, it's not cash. It's really gone out. It's just transferred over to another account. So that's why that one's showing negative. Again, that also, you'll see a negative here when our sales taxes are very high because we're allocating more into that transfer account to make sure that we're covering. Does that make sense to everyone? Again, those, those correlate. If you go over to administration, again, we're a little high on supplies. I'm not sure why the budget was done this way. And of course I did the budget, but we in supplies, we included tree trimming. So that's why supplies looks like we don't have a lot left is because we paid for tree trimming out of that. All the other accounts look fairly healthy except for our usual contracted services. We know what that one is. We'll have to do a budget transfer near the end of the year to cover that one. That was the very high engineering expend expenditures we encountered early on. We are leveling out, but we're still incurring those expenses related to Deer Hollow and some of the other work that's being done. Do you have any questions? And then finally, the police department. Once again, their maintenance, thankfully we've dropped off and we didn't spend a lot of maintenance. The last month was the air conditioning unit that they had to replace. So that one will probably need to transfer money into that account by the end of the budget year. But everything else looks pretty healthy. Contracted services, again, it's close, but I think we're within margin. But I'll answer any questions y'all have. And again, I apologize for not getting your packet, but it will be loaded into the online agenda packet for anybody to see in the future.
Vehicle's holding up pretty good that you got now? It's not so good.
We, I think both, both the ones we have, well, one of them isn't, has a boo-boo. So it's in the shop, the new one, actually. It's getting fixed. The other two are just, just went over a hundred thousand apiece. So we got to keep an eye on those.
That's.
Have a policy that. That's kind of up to y'all.
So we'll be begging in the next couple of months.
They are. They're, they're, they're still running good and everything's good. It's just, we got to keep an eye a little closer now. So.
And they. Try to trade them about a hundred and twenty?
I think manufacturer says one twenty or one thirty.
Okay.
But I've never had one that long, so I don't know.
And they do a good job of maintaining them. Do we just, they are getting along in the tooth. And they do a lot of idle time too.
Which one of the shifts seem to have the most mileage on the vehicles?
They, they pretty, pretty same. Yeah. I mean, they're, they're pretty close on both.
I just wonder whether he tried to rotate those to keep those mileage on pretty well even across the board.
Yeah, they, they, we obviously don't run them twenty-four hour. One, one unit typically won't run twenty-four hours. So there's a twelve-hour break in between. So that's kind of how we try to maintain them. Thanks, Bobby.
Thank you. Consent agenda. This agenda consists of non-controversial housekeeping items required by law. Ims may be approved with a single motion. Ims may be removed from the consent agenda by a council member by making such a request prior to a motion and vote on the consent agenda. Number one, consider approval of the May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting minutes. Number two, consider approval of the May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three special meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
By sixteen, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes.
You'll have a second?
Day eighteen.
Oh, thank you. You'll have a second. All those in favor? Margie, all those in favor? Discuss and consider approval of a resolution appointing Sham Montgomery as town secretary.
Mayor, we've all spent time in session by interviewing Shannon and by the way, welcome tonight. Thank you. I know that we've had a long discussion and had an opportunity to ask questions and get feedback. I'd suggest in order to make this meeting move a little bit faster, that I make a motion that we appoint her as the town secretary.
I'll second it. All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Shannon?
Hi, Shannon Montgomery. We solemnly swear. That I will fully execute the duties of town secretary. For the town of Barton, Texas. And will do best my ability. And most of best my ability, preserve the title and defend the people involved in the matter. Preserve, protect and defend the laws of the Constitution of the United States and the order to the town board. And we want to see the town board.
I would also like to thank Mary Kaiser for her duties as interim secretary. Thank you. You've been very helpful. Appreciate it. Valerie Harverson will submit or present the audit.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I am here. It's my second time before you to go over an audit. So I'm excited to be doing it again. We're here to look at the September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two audit. I handed you a couple of, of deliverables from the audit. I'll kind of hit the highlights. Please feel free to stop me at any point if you want me to go over anything in more detail. Overall, the audit went well. The, the timing was a little bit off. We originally had scheduled to do the audit in January, February. And the consultant at that time was not able to get the work done. And then I think we had to get to a third consultant to get the work done, but we did. And once we finally, it was ready for us, it all went really well. So we enjoyed working with the team here and the consultant Cheryl. And we're just happy to have another one behind us. So I'll kind of, like I said, hit the highlights and let me know if you have any questions. So I'll start with this bound report here. And point you first at the numbered page one, which is our independent auditors' report on the financial statements. This is where we provide an opinion on the financial statements. And it says that we believe that the financials are fairly presented in all material respects. That's what we call an unmodified opinion and it's as nice as we get as auditors. So that's what you want to see. And really what you would expect. So past that goes into the management's discussion and analysis, which starts on page five. This section is intended to provide more of a discussion or a conversational look at what happened during the year. And I like to spend a little time just because it has comparable information. So if you look to page seven, and that top schedule has your net position, your governmental activities. So this is the town's assets liabilities and the difference between them is net position. And the town's assets increased by about almost a million, about eight hundred thousand during this year of two thousand and twenty-two. Liabilities decreased by about five hundred thousand. So overall net position increased about one point three million during the year. Looking to page eight, then shows kind of the same information comparative for revenues and expenses. So total revenues are three point four million for the two thousand and twenty-two year. Growth in a couple of areas. One big one was grants and contributions. That was your CLF R F funding, that governmental funding. And then also your sales tax increased about eighty thousand. Those two things made up the biggest difference. Total expenses also went up. Most of that in your general government section. So expenses went about a hundred thousand. But ultimately still an increase about one, almost, almost one point three million during the year. So those are kind of, obviously it was a financially strong, strong year and ended with a healthy net position. And again, there's just a little more detail on that, but then I'll start pointing out just the basic financial statements, which start on page eleven. There are two different types of financials included within here. So I like to explain the difference. Page eleven and twelve provide your government-wide statements. They include all of your funds on one column. And it includes all of your capital assets and long-term debt. It's like a full accrual accounting. So this is closest to like a business would account for things. And again, the net position was about seven point five million, which is what we already talked about briefly. And the next statement is your statement of activities. So your revenues, expenses and changes in that assets, but the structure of this is a little bit different. Because the, the idea is that we're most concerned about how governments spend the resources that they have. The expenses are the first column there and they're broken up by department. So I'll just kind of follow the, the general government column there, a row. So general government had total expenses of about one point three million. And then there were direct revenues attributable to that to kind of offset the cost of general government activities, which is about two hundred thousand in charges for services. That's going to be like permits fees and things like that. Four hundred and eighty-three in operating grants and contributions, which again is mostly your CLF R F funding. And so then you come to that final total four hundred and forty-five thousand, which is the net cost of providing general government services. Drop down, you get a total of your one point two million, which is the net cost of services that the town provides. And then you have general revenues that the town collects, but are not attributable to any one department, which are your property taxes, sales taxes, franchise fees. So general revenues brought in two point five million. So ultimately the increase in your net position was one point two million. So your revenues exceeded your expenses by one point two million during this year. Past that, on page thirteen starts your fund financials. And this is more of a cash or budget basis. So it's called modified accrual. So there are no long-term assets, no long-term assets, excuse me, or no long-term debt, just current items. And then there's a reconciliation on page fourteen that shows how the two are then worked together. The biggest number you want to look at here that I like to point out is the general fund, fund balance, which was about four point one million. And most importantly of that, one point three billion is unassigned. The goal is that your unassigned fund balance is about three to six months of expenses and that would your over six months of expenses in your unassigned fund balance. Also, the other items right above that are committed, which are able to be changed by a vote from town council. So there's really quite a bit of resources available to towns to use for future. Page fourteen is then just the reconciliation between the two statements. And then fifteen is revenues, expenditures and change in fund balance, again, on that kind of more of a modified cash, more like a budget basis. And then sixteen is the reconciliation between the two. And then starting on, does anyone have any questions on any of the statements before I keep, continue on? Okay. Page seventeen then moves into your notes of the financial statements. There were no new significant accounting policies. There was a new lease standard, but it didn't impact the town. But those are included in here. And then there are some additional details on the town activity. Page twenty-four shows just kind of a roll forward of the capital assets, what was purchased, what was disposed of and the depreciation. There's also the reconciliation of your long-term debt, which went from, the notes were nine hundred and ten thousand at the beginning of the year, about three hundred thousand paid off. So decreased to six hundred and fourteen thousand at the end of twenty-two. And then past that goes into the retirement plan. I like to just point out the schedule in here, which is on page twenty-eight. And as a reminder, this is the pension plan that's with TMRS and the TMRS actuaries use all of the information for the retirees covered by your plan and, and create what they estimate to be the liability for the pension in the future. At the same time, the town of Bartonville is contributing every pay period toward assets or toward investments held to cover that cost, which is the fiduciary net position. The difference between the, the estimated liability and what the TMRS holds for the town of Bartonville's retirees is then booked on the balance sheet as the net pension liability. At the end of twenty is actually December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one is the measurement date. The net pension liability is about two hundred and twelve thousand. And that decreased about a hundred thousand from where you were last year, primarily thanks to positive investment results. But that number is a pretty significant estimate, so it's subject to change, but it's still, it's always a good thing to see a decrease, and it looks in a pretty healthy position now. The following note then goes into the post-employment benefits other than the pension, which is just the town's participation in the supplemental death benefit fund. On page thirty-one shows you that calculation of that liability, which is just about forty-one thousand at the end of the year. And those are the significant notes. The next section then goes into some more required supplementary information. Page thirty-four starts your budgetary comparison schedule for the general fund. On that top section of page thirty-four shows your total revenues exceeded the final budget amounts by about five hundred thousand. On page thirty-five, you'll see the total expenditures were under budget by about four hundred and eighty thousand. So ultimately, you end up about nine hundred and twenty thousand better off than the budget anticipated. Following that schedule goes into some additional details on your pension, some required schedules there. And then there's also some additional budget actual for those smaller funds that the town carries. And then the final section within here is internal control and compliance section. We report on internal control, financial reporting, and compliance, because this audit is performed in accordance with government auditing standards, and what is required that we do so, and we are required to report to you any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that we identify, which we did not have any. So that is what this report says, which is always good news as well. And so those are the highlights within this bound report. The other item that you have is a letter with significant accounters, just communications that we have to tell you, all of which I think I've hit on as I've talked through the report with you. We didn't have any significant issues of management, no issues with management at all, really, no significant adjustments. And this is pretty much it. So we just provide that in writing also for you to have. And so that is hopefully not too long of a discussion on the financials. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to take them. Yes, sir.
Talk of a balance sheet on page eleven.
Yes, sir.
Net position, that first line item, that two point seven million invested in, invested in capital, is that just, is that our equity in capital?
That is the capital assets balance, which is in that first section. You see it's three million, two hundred and twenty thousand. And then the debt related to that is your general obligation bonds, with those notes payable. So that's the difference between the two. So it's just, yep, assets minus the specific debt.
Actually, I was paid in twenty-four, right? The tax note?
Yes, it'll be paid off in twenty-four.
Thank you.
The three hundred and eleven thousand is the piece that's due in two years. Three hundred and three thousand is due next year. It's a combination of those two.
That's the last payment?
Yes.
Other questions? Thank you. Thank you very much.
You, Mary, you, I think there's an acceptance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna, there's no discussion, no discussion on it. Need a motion?
I think motion would be approved if this was your case one thing to.
Okay. Second. All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Number five, first reading of the resolution concerning approval of type B economic development project and performance agreement by and between Bartonville Community Development Corporation and Denmas LLC. Shannon?
A resolution of the town council, the town of Bartonville, Texas, approving a type B economic development project and performance agreement by and between the Bartonville Community Development Corporation and Denmas LLC, a Texas limited liability company to provide a financial incentive for economic development purposes, authorized pursuant to sections five zero one dot one zero three and five zero five dot one five eight of the Texas Local Government Code and providing for an immediate effective date.
Number six, first reading of the resolution concerning approval of the type B economic development project and performance agreement by and between Bartonville Community Development Corporation and JB JBM LLC, DVA Luminous Glow Spa. Shannon?
The resolution of the town council, the town of Bartonville, Texas, approving a type B economic development project and performance agreement by and between the Bartonville Community Development Corporation and JB JBM LLC, a Texas limited liability company to provide a financial incentive for economic development purposes, authorized pursuant to sections five zero one dot one zero three and five zero five dot one five eight of the Texas Local Government Code and providing for an immediate effective date.
Thank you. Number seven, discuss and consider approval of an ordinance amending the town of Bartonville Code of Ordinance as Chapter twelve, Traffic and Vehicles, Article one two point oh two, traffic control devices to authorize directing of stop sign at Porter Road and Rock Gate Road, a three-way intersection. Then? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The staff has received or did receive a request for consideration of stops locations located on Porter Road at Rock Gate. Staff compiled that information, and it was sent on to the Traffic Safety Ad Hoc Committee. They held a meeting on May twenty-second. Again, these meetings, all committee meetings are open to the public. We post those seventy-two hours in advance, and you utilize the notify me app to, for anybody who signed up to make sure that that information gets out just as a note. The committee heard from the requister on that location, talked about safety, increased trucks, increased traffic, and increased speeding in the area. And the Traffic Ad Hoc Committee voted four to zero to recommend to council the addition of stop signs on Porter Road at Rock Gate. Staff has received one email in favor of this, three emails opposed to this, and one email that is really neutral. There was not a for or against on that email. And I'll answer any questions y'all may have.
Any, no, no questions? Okay, we have some speak, people that need to speak, some residents. James Christable, please. Please, please state your name and address for the record.
Some of you may know me, not, I used to be such a judge. Reason I'm here in favor of what the stop sign there was, I had a grandson right over there on top. Playing a hospital for a month or two, his play broke, still collecting money from the state of Texas because none of that law was there anymore, he weren't allowed to sue anybody. But his name is Christian Edgar Pollan. And I'm more than happy to bring him in, wanna see. He was carried off in an ambulance to Children's Hospital down South back there. Second person I see get all that roomed was a bicycle rider. I was going hay, long Porter Road there. This guy come up and put his arm out to make a left-hand turn on Hawk Road. And this car, I'm not gonna say the man, I won't, cause it's all time. This car been rounding, getting, helping off a ratio. He went away in an ambulance. We need to get the people off of Porter Road that don't belong on Porter Road. The people that live in Lancaster, the same type, straight way to go, the shortest way to go is just a danger to us. And we don't need that. Second item I wanted to talk about was that hill between Broom and Porter. We even need to make bicycle ramp there of path where the bicycles can get outside of the road. So people don't have to go five miles an hour, two miles an hour, whatever it is, behind the bikes, go along that, and all people pass them. And you can't see over the hill. And there's gonna be a wreck in something. And it will be pure negative just on the city part, if you don't do something about it for that. While we have a total of Broom Road, I have no earthly idea. Broom Road used to go all the way through, so people couldn't, we could detour the bikes around that, you know, and come in on Broom, no like it used to be. I have no idea why they know what I was holding. I'm a soldier, was laying on the, don't even bet he lived there, and didn't worry anybody, ride through a driveway. So, whether I screwed my grand son did get hit, that Terry, you know, stop sign. Lady, lady was beating, but everybody else knew she was. And that is back when farm, before Bartonville incorporated that areas. If you were going north on Porter, you were on a farm outside, that's forty. You were going south on Porter, you were on Bartonville side, that's very far. They were just speeding both directions all the way. Some of these kids are gonna get killed on that road, and it's gonna be negative. As dogs, if we don't do something about it.
Thank you, Mr. Christable. And your address is eight thirty Weather Spoon Way, is that correct? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Thank you. Rebecca Shear?
My name is Becky Shear. I'm at eleven seventy-three Rock Gate Road. You know, I'm not opposed or for the stop signs per se, other than the fact that a stop sign is used to help drivers determine which is the right of way to go. It is not for traffic safety or public safety in that aspect. And studies have actually found that when it is used to slow down motorists or protect the pedestrians crossing streets, twenty-five percent of your drivers will blow through those stop signs regardless. And therefore, now you have created a situation where where pedestrians have a false sense of security on the stop signs there, people are going to stop. Okay, people do not stop at stop signs. Just coming here, a black sedan blew right through in front of me. People, if you're not going to stop at a stop sign, if you're not going to stop at a school bus stop sign, a school bus has a stop sign on it. If those people are not going to stop at those, if you could put a thousand up, they are not gonna stop. The bigger issue is absolutely making sure our policemen are patrolling regularly and heavily, maybe, during school bus drop-off and pickup times to keep, I am a pediatric nurse. I am a NICU nurse. Child safety is absolutely number one in this town. We go for the children first, and then we go for the community. But putting stop signs up everywhere is creating a false sense of security. People that do not stop at stop signs are not going to stop at stop signs. I, it just is the way it is. And I just feel that we are creating a bigger sense of security than what, than what the stop sign is going to do. Absolutely, we need to be out there. We need to be watching our kids, and not saying that you're not. I just want the kids and the parents to understand that stop sign means nothing to that driver that's not paying attention, that's texting on their phone, on Instagram, whatever. The only other issue I have are all the rumble strips. They are absolutely driving me crazy. I could absolutely do without the rumble strips. So that's it. Thank you.
Cassie McCollum?
I'm Cassidy McCollum. I live at eight hundred Rock Gate Road in Bartonville. And we are at the southwest corner of Rock Gate Road and Porter Road. So I have kind of a unique perspective to this situation, as in we are outside all the time and see people driving by every day. We've had several incidents that have made me very concerned about that intersection. We've had animals hit there. We've had people, like Becky mentioned, they just have gone around the stopped school bus at least twice this spring, which is terrifying. And I think that it's truly beneficial if we can try to get some people, somebody to pay attention just a little bit. Every little bit helps. And I do believe that stop signs, most people do. I mean, there are always going to be people that don't, but I think most people do. But the dramatic increase in traffic volume and speeding, and lately, over the last year or two, it's been a lot more commercial vehicles. And they just, they come down the hill on Porter and just never slow down. So they're going forty, fifty. I was out at six o'clock in the morning, the other morning, and there was a car probably going at least seventy or more. I mean, it was literally hovering. It's just terrifying watching people go. And if we could just, if it helps just a little bit, I think it's worth it before we have to deal with another injury or, God forbid, a death of anyone. And there's a neighboring city that had a traffic death and did institute the implementation of a bunch of stop signs in that city, which seemed to help. I haven't done any research on it, but I know that that is what happened. And I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Bailey? Sure.
My name is Bailey Share, and I also live at eleven seventy-three Rock Gate Road. So I wanted to start by thanking all of you guys for like your dedication to the city. I understand that an elected official's main job is to think of all the residents and not just the vocal few. With that being said, Rock Gate has fourteen houses and two are requesting a stop sign. That's fourteen percent of the road, with one requestee's driveway not even being on Rock Gate. For some background, I have lived in Bartonville for over eighteen years. This is my home. I hope it's always my home. I hope to buy a house here one day. That's how much I love this town. I walk this road every day with my dog, with our neighbors. I walked to that school bus stop when I was in school, and I never felt unsafe. I know that there's been more traffic, but like, we're not talking about an exceedingly large amount that's a stop sign's gonna stop. I would also like to mention that buses come with their own personal stop signs that fix the twice-a-day safety problem we're talking about. If we are not seeing the stop sign that is on the bus make a difference, then putting a stop sign there is not gonna make a difference. The people who are creating this problem are still going to ignore the school bus, the children, the stop sign. I think we can all agree that child safety is always of utmost importance, but this is not such a problem that we see police sitting there. We like, call the police. If there is a problem, you call the police. If it was a problem, our police officers would be sitting there during school drop-off and pickup. We have now added two stop signs to Porter, and anyone who drives the road regularly sees people doing rolling stops, not stopping, and bikes just flying through. As the chief addressed in his report, we are already seeing the stop signs are not working. What we need is enforcement, not more signs. And I say that with the utmost respect for our police officers and as a family of military and police personnel. Stop signs are meant to correct traffic flow, not reduce speed. If you determine that a stop sign is the correct decision for the whole town, we do not need rumble strips, which are not standard across Texas. Like, why is this something we're just seeing in Bartonville? I would like to emphasize again that school buses have stop signs. And when that stop sign is deployed is when a child should be crossing the road. And if the bus's stop sign is not providing enough safety for children, then additional stop signs will not provide the desired effect. Thank you.
Mike McCollum?
Thanks so much for hearing me. So Becky's point to seven, twenty-five percent of
Your address, please, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, eight hundred Rock Gate Road with Cassidy and the kids over there. The twenty-five percent of people that don't stop, but if seventy-five percent do, that's a total win. I mow along that easement. I stand there with the bus along that easement, and cars fly past us. People treat it as a divided road, so they'll stay towards our side. And if a stop sign can slow that or ease that a little bit, then, I mean, are we gonna inconvenience somebody? I drive that road twice a day, so I'll have to stop as well. But for safety, who cares? Let's put a stop sign in there, and if seventy-five percent of the people stop at it, and we're all safer because of it, and it deters traffic, maybe going a different way to Roanoke, out of Lantana. and we're all safer because of it and it deters traffic, maybe going a different way to Rowanoke, Atalanta, or wherever they're going, then it'll keep the traffic down. And there's less opportunity for an accident or somebody else to hit our rocks or maybe run a stop sign by a bus if the traffic is down because they don't like to stop at stop signs. So it, it seems to make sense. A stop sign there will deter traffic, lower the volume of traffic and we're safer. My kids are safer. I'm safer on that mower. I mean, I pull out of Jim's. I pull out of Jim's street, whether Wetherspoon over there on the tractor. And I mean, it's terrifying. Stick that bucket out there and people are honking and going around me, but if they stopped at that stop sign right there, they're not going to accelerate up to whatever speed limit they want to go. By the time they get to Wetherspoon, we'll have a chance to see me. We've got tractor signs up, but you know, so anyway, thanks you guys very much for listening to me. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Siobhan O'Brien.
Hi, I'm Siobhan O'Brien. I'm at eight seven five Porter Road. Unlike you, Jim, and even you, Ms. Share, I can't remember your name. I've only been here four years, but I'm right on the hill and my house is right on the road. And I can tell you that in four years, my bedroom is right on that window. Like the traffic has increased significantly. To your point, Cassidy, it's been a lot of commercial traffic trucks probably going to Kroger in the shopping plazas. Lots of people with really loud exhausts and I can hear them accelerate all the way up the hill and all the way down the hill and there's no pause. So to your point, Mike, even if it is only, if there's twenty five percent that don't listen, that seventy five percent are going to have to listen a little louder. Hopefully the annoying rumble strips and stop signs get people to not want to go on Porter. And people that are, that need to be there because they're part of Bartonville will use the road. I have a large horse facility. I'm always pulling out large horse trailers and I inch and I look. And when it's a Bartonville person, I always get a nice little wave. If it's not a Bartonville person, I'll get something else. And it's just even today, I, I came out of my farm up to my house. I have a gate. It takes a second for my gate to open. I had a Tesla, white Tesla. Hopefully it wasn't anybody here. Just nail the horn and I was just waiting for my gate to open. I had my indicator on it, everything right. So I'd like those people that don't need to be using Porter to not use Porter, and I hope it's annoying. And with a horse trailer, it is very annoying to go over rumble strips, but I'd rather that because my, my own safety, the town's safety, and certainly the kids and animal safety is important. Thank you.
Thank you. Council discussion. I know, I know from twenty one to twenty two, there was another thousand cars a day from Porter to Jeter on the traffic count that's done every November by B C D C. So there's now thirty five hundred a day down Porter to Jeter and then east. So the traffic has definitely increased according to our traffic counts in the last two years.
It'll be interesting to see what traffic counts are come October, but we'll see what it has any effect. But the main thing is from my standpoint for safety, it's like we talk about two stop signs that have been added to Porter. Actually, it's only one at Broom Road. It's just going both ways. The stop sign at Porter and Jeter was always there. Or yeah, Porter and Jeter was always there. So it made sense to put a hard stop there because if you looked left, which that's how I would go to my house, cars coming around that corner, they were hard to see and they didn't always slow down. Now they do. You're always going to have people that run stop signs. That's just a, a fact of life. But if you can get any percentage of people that will, even if it's a rolling stop to slow down, save somebody's life, that, that's kind of where I come down because we've already had one resident who was hit as a pedestrian, but amputated, short term memory loss. We've had at least two bicyclers that I know. We have Mr. Crucible. I didn't know about your incidents, but now I do. These are just things that I think about. And the one thing I do know, having done nothing, didn't work either.
I don't disagree. I will tell you, I don't just, the point about it being inconvenient, it's, it's very inconvenient for me. I mean, I've added five stops in my hour commute every day to my office, but I think it's the right thing to do because the traffic in the town has ramped up so much. And it's, it'll continue to go, even if we can, can keep it choked back a little bit, it's still going to grow. But some of this stuff helps keep people from cutting through. In fact, my other topic, I mean, the, the bicycles, I mean, that's, that's, that's out of control and getting, and getting worse. And, and Mr. Christopher, the point you can't get up, if you get behind somebody on a bicycle, they, they can't get up that hill and you can't pass. But I, I think it's good because if you're making more people stop and more people not cut through our town, I think that's good for the residents.
Same position. I've, I have friends all over this area. People have told me that driving through town now is no fun. And that's, I'm a Harley guy, guys who ride through, you hear the motorcycles roll through town. Lots of guys who use it, not so much anymore. They just don't have, you have to stop repeatedly and they don't want to take that route anymore. And that's the point. I think that was the entire point to you, what you said earlier, Keith. Safety is our charge. If we can reduce traffic in any way, shape or form to slow down the traffic in town, to reduce the number of cars on our roads, I think it's the right step. I think it's the right thing to do.
Also, it's the town council is not naive enough to think that one stop sign or five new stop signs is going to be the sole thing that makes the difference. It's a combination of traffic control measures as well as police enforcement. And that's, that's, you've got to put those two together. And you know, Bobby and his team are out there. They can't be at all points at all times. So we're going to see, I see things all the time that if a peace officer was there, he would take care of it. But he's not because he's elsewhere in the town controlling that area. Not his fault, doing his job. And he just didn't happen to see that one. But it, it's going to take, it's going to take the traffic measures as well as enforcement. Even, even the citizens in this town of slowing it down a little bit and doing your part as a citizen to slow it down and obey our, our traffic laws.
Also Waze and Google Maps, they redirect drivers around towns that have rumble strips and stop signs. So that I think will help. And, and you're right, certain amount of people are going to run the stop signs or they'll roll and just take off. And if we can keep some of those people out of our town by being redirected away from our town through one of the mobile apps, I think that's helpful to.
Over the years, the chief and I've had this discussion, and so with some of the officers. And I think we'll all agree that the most effective way to slow traffic is with police presence. And I'm a hundred percent in agreement. And chief, I know you'll shake your head and pat me on the back later, but that's, I understand. But stop signs are a tool. The one thing about a stop sign is even if they're speeding, if someone is a law abiding citizen and they see that stop sign, they're going to stop. It didn't slow them down. It stopped them. Now, having said that, it's when you have a stop sign that you're used to, you accept it and it's part of your daily routine. And Rock Gate being one of them, the only convenient inconvenience that's going to be is on the way home. Because they're going to either have to stop anywhere to make a right or a left, depending which direction they go. But that would be in some definition, I guess to some would be a nuisance or an inconvenience. But when you talk to the walkers and the joggers, the horseback riders, the runners, they'll tell you they've seen an increase in traffic and wonder where this is coming from. I took it upon myself months ago before some of these subdivisions opened back up, going down to track, to tractor supply and sitting there and watching cars cut across going into Hudson Hill. And once they open that hill on the top, and I've had discussion with the chief as well, once they open that in the saddlebrook up there on top, now I see vehicles coming in saddlebrook, coming up through Hudson Hill, taking that turn, going out and following them on French Town. We're going to highway three seventy seven and they're going all the way through Bartonville and turning right or left on three seventy seven. Gibson going into four seven is a nightmare if you're at four o'clock in the afternoon trying to get out. And don't be driving a tractor trying to get across it because you will never make it. But like most others, we all assume and probably rightfully so, that our traffic is increasing along with the speed and it's, we, we assume that it's non-residents that are coming through our town going to point B to get a, because waves. I guess that's what my grandkids call it. They told me this and I didn't understand until they showed me. But it will direct you in a route that's most convenient for you at that time. And I have argued with them many times going to Frisco and going to McKinney and Princeton to see them. We're going all the way through Frisco because we're not out there on three eighty and that's the most direct shortest route. But it's because they're on, they're listening to that ways and they, and I tell them that they don't know what I know. I've got a map in my head and I, here's the shortest way. But having said that, the, the routing that waves will put and bring citizens or non-citizens through Bartonville, I'm sure has, is, has an effect. And they say that if it gets updated in the system, that at some point ways will catch up with it and they'll no longer push those citizens through our stop signs because of the slowness of the traffic in their commute. Now, i- is that going to be a fact? I don't know. I'm just saying that's what I've been told by others and some of the citizens. But I want to press upon each one of you, the citizens. I've been on council for nine years and the most important thing to me is the safety of our citizens first and foremost. That includes the bicyclists, which a lot of people, I did the same thing when I first moved out here. I hated to get in front of them to get in front of me. But hey, you know what? It slowed traffic down. And, and as Keith alluded to, we had one resident that lost a limb. It changed her life forever. You can't, money can't buy that. I mean, you can't do anything to go back and undo that. That's an accident that, that should never have happened, but it did happen. So we just learn from it and try and, and improve on the conditions that, that caused it to do her. It took us many years to acquire twenty four hour police protection. We finally accomplished it, but through our management of the budget, our tax structure, spending money on the items that we need and not, there's a difference between want and a need. And since I've been on council and I'm, I'm very appreciative of the fact that the citizens here on the council that gave it their time to service did so, and we're all frugal about taking care of the people's money because it's, it is your money, not ours to spend. So we spend it on items that we need, not what, what some, some won't. But I'm just afraid that it's a matter of time that we have some accidents out here that's going to involve pedestrians and walkers and runners. And I've even called the horse people down that ride horses, horseback on the bar ditches to please not do that. And they say that's the reason, I mean, this is country. That's why they're out here. I understand that. I'm just so fearful because I saw one horse about a year ago rear up when a motorcycle went by and that horse threw that individual off and it was right up there on Jeter Road. And now that was one, I haven't seen it since, but I've seen riders going crossing McMakin, especially that scares me going on Broom Road because there's people that go down through there that if they see a horse in the bar ditch, they just keep on going. They don't slow down. But having said that, it's, it's just something I think that we need to all err on the side of caution and do what we can to help ensure the safety of all the runners, the walkers, even pedestrians that are just out checking mail. I've seen that happen many times where cars zoom by and passed each other in front of a mailbox with the person in the bar ditch and that's just totally unacceptable. But we just have to be cognizant of the fact that those things happen. And if stop signs prevent one person from being hit or injured, then so be it. We, it's an inconvenience to understand, but hey, why wouldn't anyone that has a wife, a sister, a child, a brother, anyone in their family that walks the roads, walks a dog, jogs, runs, a member of your family that would want any of us to negate public safety for our convenience? If I have to spend two minutes going through four stop signs to get to my residence of an evening, that's a small price to pay for the safety of our citizens. So I would concur that I am in favor of that stop sign on Rock Gate.
Yes, I, I also, I think that until something touches you personally, like the instances of our resident that had her foot amputated. I personally know the stop signs that we've put at Gibbons and Dove Creek. The property there, the fence has been ran through three times since we owned that property there. And I mean, two of the people were injured because they were coming around that curve so fast. But like I said, until you're personally affected by an incident that could have been prevented. I know the stop signs are inconvenient. We all know that. But at the same time, I like the rumble sticks, the stickers on the road too. Because I think now that everybody's texting and talking on the phone and, and doing, it gets your attention before the stop sign. And I know it's inconvenient for the people who have horses and, and they don't like stopping because you know, that's just another time that you have to stop and then start again. But I think personally, the safety is more important than the few minutes of inconvenience. So I would be in favor of it.
I have one more question. When we the first time we looked at putting in stop signs, we, the issue on the rumble strips, one of the things that was brought up was, you know, I wanted to make sure it wouldn't impede our emergency services. So I'd like to ask the two chiefs, your guys drive it all the time. Chief, coming from the fire station to here, y'all had to drive over those rumble strips. Would those impede our emergency services vehicles in any way? Does it cause any damage or anything like that? So. Okay. Chief, all right. But I just wanted to get that out there as well.
Yeah, we have one question for staff though. In the summary, it notes, there's a number of signs located in the area traveling north and some of those signs can be relocated to reduce visual noise as well as a stop ahead sign on top of the sign, on top of the hill traveling south. Is that all part of this same motion? The same amendment we're trying to make?
Oh, that'll be, the staff will just handle that. We have one of the tractors in that location, one of the, the signs with the cattle on there. There's just too much there. We'll just relocate those. That's all part of the budget number, but it doesn't have to be part of your motion. And again, the rumble strips are only at the new stop locations. To Councilmember Aaron's point, that with all the distracted drivers, those were recommended only on the new stop locations. You don't have those as you come up to Porter where that sign always was or any of the others.
There's something Mrs. Share brought to, and I want to commend you for advocating that for children. Because that must, in that school, then it does concern me. I've been by there a number of times and with cars backed up and kids jumping out of vehicles and running in there. I think that, and I haven't had an opportunity to discuss this with the chief yet, but to find out whose jurisdiction that is, if that's the fat is Flower Mound over there on that, on the south, going to Red Rock there with the, with that Montessori school is.
On northbound or going southbound?
It's a school in Bartonville.
The school is not in Bartonville. The southbound side of the road is.
Yeah, the south.
The northbound side is not.
The northbound is Bartonville.
So that'd be flower. Southbound is Bartonville. So it would be Flower Mound or County or one of those. Because that's not the only issue. There's also a traffic issue. That's, that's another.
You're saying at some point that, that deserves some recognition and some attention to see it's something that we have within our power that we can do there. Because we're talking about a child, a safety of a child. And you know, that's, that, that falls on all of us. A child can't speak for itself and can't defend itself. It's our responsibility. I would, I would love that.
Make a motion to approve an ordinance amending the town of Bartonville's coding of words is chapter twelve, traffic and vehicles, article twelve dot zero two, traffic control devices and article twelve dot zero three, operation of vehicles as stated.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Number eight, second reading of a resolution concerning approval of a type B economic development project performance agreement by and between the Bartonville Community Development Corporation, Denmus LLC. Shannon?
A resolution of the town council, the town of Bartonville, Texas, approving a type B economic development project and performance agreement by and between the Bartonville Community Development Corporation and Denmus LLC, a Texas limited liability company to provide a financial incentive for economic development purposes authorized pursuant to sections five oh one dot one oh three and five oh five dot one five eight of the Texas local government code and providing for an immediate effective date.
Thank you. Number nine, second reading of a resolution concerning approval of type B economic development project performance agreement by and between Bartonville Community Development Corporation and JB JBM LLC DBA luminous glow spa. Shannon?
A resolution of the town council, the town of Bartonville, Texas, approving a type B economic development project and performance agreement by and between the Bartonville Community Development Corporation and JBJB M LLC, a Texas limited liability company to provide a financial incentive for economic development purposes authorized pursuant to sections five zero one dot one zero three and five zero five dot one five eight of the Texas local government code and providing for an immediate effective date.
Thank you. Number ten, clarify appointments to the ad hoc special events advisory committee. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just so you know that Mary was not just sitting in there filling a spot. She noticed that we had an issue with the last meeting. The I understood it as staff that Councilmember Crandall would be available to the special events committee, but the motion was made to appoint him as an alternate. What that does is creates a committee with three council members, a quorum. So again, the clarification would be that Councilmember Crandall can be available for consultation, if you will, but is he cannot be an appointed member of the committee.
Even as an alternate?
Even as an alternate.
Okay.
So we need a motion to remove him from the committee. Go ahead.
Make a motion to remove myself from the 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 special events committee.
I'll second it.
All's in favor.
I did it to myself.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Number eleven, discussing consider approval of resolution concerning approval of type D development project and performance agreement by and between Bartonville Community Development Corporation, Denmus LLC. Dan?
Mayor, I was making sure Brenda wasn't here to to talk about this one. During their last meeting, the community development corporation voted four zero to authorize funding for twenty thousand dollars for the construction costs of electric towards the construction costs of electric vehicle charging stations at the Bartonville Town Center. The the cost is greater than that, but that was the contribution that the board, the committee felt that this warranted. Again, there's a lot of discussion about it. They they feel that this really there's a there's a gap between Flower Mound and Denton on charging stations and we do have there are a lot of Teslas out here. I can attest to that. So again, that was their discussion. The original request was for thirty five thousand, but they felt that twenty thousand was the the amount that they were willing to contribute to that. There is a representative from the Bartonville Town Center here if y'all have questions for him as well. And I'll answer any questions you may have if I can.
Stations at Town Center. Where are they going to put those? Did you say?
Up near the pond, I think, again, it is that the still the plan is sort of around the pond, right? Almost in front of the Marty B's Coffee?
That was my question of where and how many?
Yeah, I was gonna ask.
This is for two. Go ahead.
Yeah, the I'm Stephen Burke with the Denmus LLC. I'm the senior manager of commercial properties. The proposed installation is effectively immediately to the east of the Marty B's Coffee Shop as the parking starts in the curved portion around the pond. So if you look at the curve, it's on the northern end of that curve really directly across from Haber and Orthodontics and across from Marty B's Coffee Shop. So we would start at that first space. We would put in two type two dual pump charging stations. So we would serve four vehicle slots at a time. Now, as part of the project, we are pre wiring for three addition, three additional type two chargers in case we need them down the road. It's a new world. We don't know where it's going to go. We don't really anticipate making any money off that, but we do think it's going to help with our long term leasing, tenant retention, employee retention, and ultimately if we can keep our shoppers either at Marty B's or at the town center to stay a little bit longer because they can charge, that should drive sales tax as well. So.
Effect that has on electric grid?
CoServe has studied it. They we don't have a problem providing that. It's just two stations, two thirty amp stations. Type two's not fast chargers. They're sort of the middle charger. So, you know, we do need a new transformer. Part of that cost is coServe running from the junction box at the corner of Marty B's Coffee Shop just across the underneath the the drive there for, but it will have its own dedicated transformer. You know, at the end of the day, we don't know how much power it's going to use because we don't know how many people are going to use it. We just think it's appropriate for us to lead in this community and and this is an amenity that that the community needs. So.
Stand there's a time limit on that. Is that correct?
A time limit.
Time limit for the charging?
Well, I think it depends. I mean, a a consumer of the of the electricity for their for their vehicle could choose to just charge, you know, for half an hour or they could charge for eight hours. You know, generally speaking, you're going to load with a type two charging station, you're probably going to load like maybe thirty miles an hour. So if somebody has a battery system in their vehicle that holds, you know, three hundred miles, potentially they could charge for ten hours.
See, wouldn't if I'm trying to determine who who would be who would be serviced by by that? Would that be someone that's running low on that battery charging? They got there and plug it in for eighteen minutes and enough to get back to the house because there's no one going to sit there and charge that thing for eight hours?
Well, I mean, there's a lot of people that spend a lot of time at the town center at Marty B's. Yeah, you've got employees, a lot of employees in all the businesses there. And ultimately with Cloud Nine Salon coming, there's going to be a lot more. Additionally, you know, if you go eat at the barrel, if you go eat at, you know, Tim House's new concept that should open soon, where Palermo's used to be, you go into Marty B's on a Friday night. You know, these people are staying for two hours, three hours, and that's enough to put, you know, sixty to ninety miles on their vehicle. People who generally drive locally don't fill it up, you know, they just if they're out for the day, they're just going to throw forty or sixty miles on it. But ultimately, you know, whereas there's two hundred thousand electric vehicles on, you know, registered in Texas today in five years, in seven years or ten years, that number's going to be significantly higher.
If you develop a parking lot at some point, just to charge.
I was reading an article today, as a matter of fact, from Dallas Morning News, Steve Brown wrote an article, the real estate guy at the Morning News that, you know, this is this is a new world in real estate. Properties are starting to compete with with electric vehicle charging. So we've been working on this since December internally and we're trying, excuse me, we're trying to lead.
I was gonna ask, how many requests for this service did you have before you decided to think about putting the stations there?
Zero requests to my knowledge. I mean, we're not doing it because we have, you know, tenants and and customers requesting it. We're doing it because we see the vision down the road of what will be required. And the thinking was if we wait and react, it won't be worth the investment. If we put it in today, then Marty's probably not going to put it in after us because it's already served. He's not going to want to spend the thirty nine thousand dollars and come in, you know, and twenty five hundred dollars a station per year for the subscription service. So the cost of the equipment for the two pumps, we're spending fifty two hundred dollars a year for on a five year contract. So that charge point will maintain the system. We don't have to do it. So, you know, it's a long term investment for us. But in the end, we think if it helps us retain one tenant or generates one new tenant over time, it's gonna, you know, it pays for that. So.
A charge. I'm just curious.
Well, that's a great question. That that was a big topic in the BCDC meetings as well. I think that there's that's going to be a very flexible topic over time.
Is there a standard already?
Well, that's a great, that's a great question, too. Some properties use use the charging to drive traffic. If I've got a mall or a very large shopping center and I want to really attract people, I might provide free charging. We're not in that position where we can do it. Or if I'm a really large employer, I might, you know, provide that as an employee benefit. We don't think we're gonna, you know, we're not quite in that league at the town center. But I think what we'll probably end up seeing over time is probably a little bit different pricing during peak times and a little bit lower pricing during non peak times. Yeah, well, exactly. You know, a Friday night with Mark all of Marty's parking all the way across the town center. The the other thing is if someone charges for two hours, they've they've put in the system, we're going to charge for two hours and then we're done. If they don't, they would get a text from the system or or their app will notify them, your vehicle's ready. If they don't move the vehicle within five or ten minutes, whatever the tolerance is, then they start be being charged an hourly rate as well, which is a disincentive to keep their vehicle in that spot where someone else can't charge. So.
Answered my question in your statement.
Yes.
These will become electric vehicle restricted parking.
Absolutely. And we will have, it's going to be an interesting transition because I'm anticipating we actually may have to have some towing signs up and some different things because I have a feeling, you know, eleven PM on a on a Friday night or something, people are going to think, ah, nobody's charging. We've really gonna, we're gonna have to protect protect those spaces. So we'll see. There there will be an adjustment. I'll talk to Marty about it too, make sure he understands it clearly.
Give me an idea of what the services are, what they're charging now? Just roughly, just all over?
Oh, it really varies. I mean, the highest I've seen I've seen type two chargers as high as forty nine cents a kilowatt hour. That's really pretty expensive. I think that in our peak hours, we're probably looking at thirty nine cents with a lower amount during non peak to try to encourage people to to come and use it then. But again, we we're going to have real time data through charge point, full access to when our systems are being used, how long people are there, how much that, you know, and and we'll be able to use all that data to sort of modify our pricing to maximize use and hopefully improve our ability to recover our expenditures as well. You know what? No, but if you got a charge point account, you could park there and just pay the five dollars an hour. So.
I know you were hoping to charge your truck. Any other questions?
This ask is for two stations and two stations only.
Four spots.
Well, it's
Four spots.
Four spots, two stations. That is correct. If I can clarify and interrupt, the project itself will pre wire for three more stations. In other words, the wiring will be there for three more. So we're only installing two to start. And the reason for that is it's twenty six hundred hundred dollars a station per year, per per year. We're not necessarily ready to jump instantly to five stations serving ten spots.
So it's going to be wired for the additional, but at that point, if you wanted to expand beyond these two, four spots, it would be a separate request, which may not be approved.
There's no other cost.
The it would be the twenty six hundred dollars.
I would, yes, he would. We would have to change our subscription service to put in those additional pumps, stations, and we would just pay twenty six hundred dollars for the new stations, but it would be pre wired. The equipment's already, the equipment's free.
Maybe I just to clarify this, we're asked to approve two stations, not potentially six.
It's really just the project. It's because it's again, it includes the pre wiring for the remainder. So it's just their project is about thirty nine thousand. The BCDC was willing to offset some of that risk at twenty thousand. For and again, right now just includes two stations. Anything he does past that there's there's not anticipated to be another request. If there's a different project, he certainly could come back.
There would be no other request related to stations.
But it but it could be a lot more than two stations. That's that's.
It could ultimately be as many as five stations based on this project. Yes.
And if there are five stations, if you expand into five stations, is there enough physical space to handle?
Oh, absolutely. We have tons of parking. I know people that that frequent Marty's Coffee Shop love to park there right there on on the curve, but that ultimately would would just start a row of 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 charging stations. So currently it'll take the first four spots. If we add more stations down the road, we would not exceed, at least we can't imagine exceeding five stations. But ultimately that would just take ten spots and we've I I honestly haven't counted them, but I bet we've got twenty, twenty two spaces, twenty five spaces on that curve.
There wouldn't be a conflict then with the other businesses that people want taking that parking spot up using for electric vehicles instead of just.
At the end of the day, the the town center owns that parking. That's not Marty's parking or or Cloud Nine's.
Thank you.
And ultimately, I think the service will benefit all of the. So any?
Have a motion?
Thank you.
I'll make
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution for approval of a type B economic development project and performance agreement by and between the Bartonville Community Development Corporation and Denmus LLC.
Second, all those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Number twelve, discussing consider approval of a resolution concerning approval of type B economic development project performance agreement by and between the Bartonville Community Development Corporation and JBJB M LLC DBA luminous glow spa. Dan?
Mayor and Council, this item came before the BCDC twice. This is for luminous glow spa. This twenty thousand is to reimburse or offset marketing costs for the business as allowable by the corporation. This one's a little bit different. I don't think y'all have done that in the past as far as covering marketing expenses. It is allowable. But the 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 young lady who was putting this med spa in was unaware that the incentives were available. And so we've changed our processes. Those applications are now online for anybody to see. And so again, we won't, we won't be in the position of people feeling like they didn't know something was available to them. Additionally, we did not do legal review in advance of the previous action by the BCDC. They had voted to grant this these funds related to her expansion of the space and and finish out. But the way that was structured was not, it did not meet the statute. So again, we've we have figured out a way to get the incentive to the business as the BCDC had originally intended and meet the intent of the statute as well. So again, well, I'll answer any questions you may have, but this is for med spa, luminous med spa. And again, it is for marketing purposes.
Discussion?
Questions? Where is this?
It's in the town center.
Okay.
With the applicant, can we talk to?
I'm so glad you're here. I didn't see you back there, Jennifer.
Oh, you didn't. Hello. I was just being quiet, staying right here. So what questions you have?
Talk about your services a little bit, what you offer and.
Okay, so I am a resident of Bartonville. Actually, I live on Porter. It's been hard for me to be quiet about stop sign, but I just needed to be for today's meeting because I wanted to focus on this. And I have a med spa that is right kind of at a corner to the barrel. And so it's a new business. I did not know anything. Um and so it's a new business. Um I did not know anything about um being able to go forth and ask for a grant. It's actually Tim House. Who um told me that that was something I could do, and by the time I reached out, I was already done with my build out. Um so I paid for that out of my pocket. I didn't get any loans or anything of that nature, and so. It's hard building a business from scratch. It's hard starting, um you know, any business. Um. But with a medical spa, there's a lot of equipment that's required and things of that nature. Uh marketing is really important um to be able to put your name out there. And so um in speaking with um that and the B C D C, they came up with a more creative way for me to do that. And being is that I do spend a lot of money on marketing dollars in order to be able to grow, which I've. I've grown some and I continue to grow more and more, and I'm really excited to be doing business in where I live. So I opened actually in Highland Village um in February last year, so I've been in business about a year and a half. I moved over here in November and had my grand opening then.
She's been very successful. So.
No.
In. Questions?
They're for marketing dollars to help you market your business, right?
Sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a motion?
Moves that we approve a resolution concerning the approval of type B economic development project performance agreement. By and between Bartonville Community Development Corporation and J B J B M LLC D B A luminous glow spa.
Second. All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Number thirteen, discuss adjusting the start time of the regular meetings of the town council. I asked for this to be put on the agenda because right now we have a policy that basically says we can't start a meeting before seven P M. In case like tonight, we could have started it at six thirty or a little earlier. I'd like to be able to adjust the meetings if if y'all are. If that's okay with y'all, rather than having to wait, I think the earlier people, we can start as long as everybody can get here from work. Um we have more flex, it's just for flexibility purposes. Okay?
I have a suggestion. Mayor, um I did some. Reconnaissance looking review of different towns. Policies on setting times for meetings. And a few actually state a time. Uh some don't state a time, just the date. And so setting a time is fine, but I had, I came across an example from Prosper. Then I think. Y'all could consider it and give you the greatest amount of flexibility. Uh they said, they stated time, so regular meetings of the town council shall be held on the, and they meet twice a month, so second and fourth Tuesdays. The meetings will begin at, well, in Prosper at five forty-five. But you pick a time. And then it says unless the time is otherwise modified by posted agenda. And we held, and will be held at the location, blah, blah, blah. So it gives you flexibility with that language. To have a standard time. But also the ability to change it. Upon whatever need, if the need arises. So what time did I hear y'all say?
What do y'all think? Six, six thirty?
Set a time. We did them. We started at six thirty for a while.
Well, we we have.
Close session now.
Yeah. Six thirty is fine with me.
See, yeah, because you look back in time.
You could set them at six thirty and then adjust it if we need to based on this, uh the way this is written.
I can do an ordinance that way to to change the current language.
Coming from Irving. You do that?
By six thirty. Okay.
Man, you you've worked out of your house, or you? Okay.
You look at our staff over over the years, the times that they've spent here because of their travel time at home and here. Would this also apply to some of the committee meetings?
Those are, uh the ad hoc are more adjustable, correct? You can make those at five thirty that um.
We did that. Yeah.
I like that, too, because that way you can.
Me, too.
Up your. Change without trying to get in.
We want to do six. I'm fine with six.
I should.
Yeah, mayor, the committees are more flexible and they did that for me and I do appreciate it.
Yes. So we could just say six thirty and then adjust it from there if we wanted. If everybody's available at six, we could do it, whatever. Okay. Is that okay?
Now, would that have to be posted seventy-two hours before also?
Oh, yeah. Always. Okay. That would be great. That'd be great.
Do we need a motion for this?
No, it's just direction, direction to staff. Thank you, Ed. Appreciate it. Thank you, council. Um close session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Chapter five five one, the town council will meet and post executive session in accordance with the Texas Government Code. Number one, section five five one. Point oh seven four, personnel matters to deliberate consider appointment, employment of public officers or employees to wit town administrator. Number two, five five one point oh seven one, consultation with town attorney to seek legal advice. Of its attorney regarding legal issues related to the town's extraterrestrial territorial extrater. The town's extraterritorial jurisdiction, E T J, issues related to the first ranch development, issues related to amending the town's development ordinance and any and all legal issues related thereto. Number three, section five seven one. Point oh seven one, consultation with town attorney to seek legal advice of its attorney regarding a funding request from the Denton County Emergency Service District One and any and all legal issues related thereto. Section four, number four, section five five one point oh seven one, consultation with the town attorney to seek legal advice of its attorney regarding police operations and any and all. Legal issues related thereto. And number five, section five five one point oh seven one, consultation with town attorney in section five five one point oh seven two, deliberation regarding real property and any and all legal issues related thereto. Time being eight thirty six. We're now convening the.
Uh and Ed, I'll have to recuse myself for item two, so whenever that comes up, I'll walk, I'll step out of a session, then somebody come get me.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Let's kind of wait to see what the the Texas legislative session comes out. I assume they did not pass any.
All the bills regarding short term rentals died.
Okay.
Without being enacted. So. Sure. I mean, if I'm kind of, I think it'd be helpful to think it through and then talk about it at an upcoming meeting so I can get the right kind of direction. Because a few things have happened with lawsuits. City of Dallas just passed something. Everyone anticipates Dallas getting sued over it all. And so all that will be good data to talk about.
Well, I certainly don't want to create liability for the town, but I do want to, you know, it's becoming an issue all over the place and.
This won't be a future item, but what about the openings yet? Do we have on any feedback on applications?
Uh, yeah, that was going to get us that. Yeah, that's not an agenda item, but he was going to get us the openings, I think, for the meetings, whose application, that kind of thing. Yeah. Um, the other thing, Ed, that I would like to do in the next meeting, probably the close session is I'd like for you to review House Bill 2127, how it's going to affect our town. Mm hmm. That's the death star bill.
The super preemption.
Mm hmm. It's gonna, it's the one where it's going to affect towns. Uh, you're going to have to go by the Texas government. You, it's going to limit what we can do as a town. I'm not sure how it's, a lot of it's designed for the larger cities, Austin, labor laws and things like that. So I don't know. Twenty one twenty seven. Time being nine thirty seven, meeting adjourned. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I guess you, I guess you and I'll be.
Thank you. I'm very excited to be here.
It didn't sound very good to me, and I didn't know anything about it.
Well, it's.
It must been an ongoing thing.
It has been, unfortunately. I don't think anything has changed from this one and anybody else. Appreciate you.